Welcome to our November Board of Education meeting. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Paul Edoufias?
Here, sorry.
Here.
John Green.
Here.
Scott Latham.
Here.
Brian Tobin. In the event of an emergency, visitors are advised that they may exit through the one side door which leads to the front end of the parking lot. In the event of an emergency, everybody is asked to move away from the building and do not attempt to report or make any further traffic problems or block incoming emergency vehicles.
Thank you. Sorry, guys, we're going to go out of order on our agenda. The student recognition and presentation, Mr. Latham would like to take place at the end of the meeting. No, just kidding. We're going to put it in the superintendent's report, so just give us a minute or two. The first thing we have to do is our first hearing of visitors, which we request questions and comments to be kept to agenda items only. Does anyone care to address the board right now? No way. Okay. Okay, that brings us to our consent agenda, which is the approval of our minutes from our regular board meeting. How do you do this with the mask on this thing? Okay. Of October 27th, our financial matters, which is our bills, which are our bills, treasuries report, monthly budget status reports, transfers, extra classroom activity funds. We have a couple contracts to approve with Helping Hands Children's Services, Royal Tennis Estates, and South Huntington Union Free School District. We're surplus in a bunch of old stuff, copy machines and chairs, and some really old books, it looks like. And our CSEs. So are there any questions or comments on the consent agenda? Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Anybody have any old business? Nope. So that brings us to our superintendent's report along with our student recognition. That wasn't so bad.
So it's always nice to recognize our students, especially those that choose to do above and beyond. Athletics and participating in athletics is not something that's required in school. It's something that you choose to do, and it takes extra effort and extra time and commitment and sacrifice. And so it's great to recognize our student athletes because you are all students and that is a heavy load, and taking on athletics gives you a little bit of an extra title. So I'm going to introduce Steve Flanagan, our athletic director, and he's going to come up and start the process.
Good evening, everybody. It's nice to see everyone. I'd like to take a moment to thank Dr. Morrow and the Board of Education for giving the athletic department the time to recognize a special season for our athletes, coaches, and fall programs. I'd also like to take a moment to thank our coaches for all their hard work and dedication throughout the year. Whenever you see good things happen to a program, people are always wondering how it happened. And when I discuss with a lot of coaches, we always say it's not a secret. There is a recipe for success. And although we see the success today in our sports teams, this success really started this past season, two years ago, six years ago, when we maybe started a program. And there are many hours of extra work that go into it. It could be the bubble, summer training, summer runs the coaches are putting out. And those hours of extra work are the reason why we're here, and I want to thank you for doing that extra so we can celebrate today. I have many wonderful things to say about our athletes, but I'm going to say that to the coaches. And it is my pleasure to announce the League III Girls Tennis Coach of the Year and a Final Four coach also, Michael Carver.
First of all, I want to thank the board for inviting us here tonight to be recognized. My team, it's an honor, and thank you very much. And thank you for your kind words, Steve. Twenty-seven years here coaching, all twenty-seven of them, with various sports. And I want to recognize, I'll be remiss if I don't recognize my fellow coaches that I'm here with tonight. Some of us have coached almost all those years together in some form or fashion. And it's a great place to coach, a great place to work, great kids. And I wouldn't be here tonight if it wasn't for these young ladies sitting right here. So a little bit about my team, our team, before I call them up. We finished the season at ten and four, the regular season, eleven and six overall. We made it to the Suffolk County semifinal match, which is the first in Southold history of girls tennis. The team took, as Mr. Flanagan said, Super Six honors as well as Final Four honors. The team was honored last week at the dinner, Suffolk County Coaches Association Dinner. I already had a meeting prior with parents about girls working in the winter this year, which is great. But I'm going to say some of the stuff I already said. We got a lot of fun this year. We had a ball, starting in July with the off-season work. There were two teams that I can think of that I coached in twenty-seven years here. I had my 2015 baseball team that made it to the state semifinal game, semifinal game, and this team. And something they both had in common, I feel like I'm talking, I want to talk to everybody, but I can't. I was going to say, go stand up on stage, which I could do. But anyway, a lot of different person, both those teams had similarities. They were very unique personalities. Every one of these young ladies here have a different personality from the other one. There's not one personality on a team that's similar. But they all gelled together like I said, the eighty-six Mets, okay? I see a lot of Mets fans here, and you know what I'm talking about. It took all those personalities to put together a championship team, and that's exactly what I got here, a bunch of different personalities that put together a championship season. Hard work pays off. We started in July in the summer out there on the courts. We had two sessions going on. We had Ms. Salmaggi and Coach Smalls were running a session in the day. I was running an evening session, so we were going like twice a week, getting those rackets going. It paid off. So I want to also thank Coach Salmaggi and Coach Smalls for the work that we did as a program. We just don't have a successful team. We have a successful program. We have more numbers in the girls tennis program than we've ever had, and we probably have more numbers in the girls tennis program than a lot of schools we play. At a time when we have schools that are very similar or bigger, I'm sorry, bigger than us, where their programs, tennis programs are folding, not having varsity season, canceling the varsity season, our team, our program is flourishing, and numbers are coming up. And, you know, success helps that. People want to be part of success. But there's players on here on this team right now that started when we weren't that successful, and it's their hard work over the last five years that helped build the foundation that we have. So, girls, thank you. You know, you put Southold girls tennis on the map, and I just hope that you had as much fun playing for me as I had coaching for you. Unfortunately, we're losing a few seniors, but I also told the team, we're very fortunate that we will be able to fill your spot on the roster, but you individually will not be able to be replaced. So we will be missed greatly. So with that said, I'm going to call up, I think Mr. Flanagan and anybody else puts me first so that I screw up and people learn from my mistakes, because I'm probably going to get this wrong. I hope I go on the right one. And I always have to adjust the microphone because I'm small and everybody makes small jokes, but here we go. So anyway, so I'm going to do my best here in doing this the right way. So first of all, I'd like to call up the team, and you're going to stay up here for a photo, okay? So first player, Ellie Alloway. I guess kind of stand over there, Ellie. Oh, come get you. Joanna Anderson. I think Joanna had to leave. She was here earlier for the meeting. Kaitlyn Duffy. Also here earlier, but disappeared. Okay. Okay. Cameron Koch. I think that's one.
Thank you.
You're welcome. You're welcome. Natalie Copala. Did I get that right? Then I got the, that's my Polish heritage now, I was able to get that right. Good. These are all Ivya. These are sticking together.
I can tell.
Okay, there we go. Thank you. Nyla Olson. Camille Ramon. And also Judy Anderson's, Judy came up and finished the season with us, so Judy Anderson as well, but they wouldn't. So in addition to our team, we had some individual awards that were given out by the county. So first things first, we have a team sportsmanship award, which was also honored at the dinner last week, Ellie Alloway. All-league player Caitlyn Duffy. All-league player Jess Latham. And all-league player Cameron Koch. Our all-county player this year, actually for the last five years. Natalie, I think she only lost probably three, three or four league matches in the five years, so she's probably like fifty-four and like three, her record. No, no exaggeration. And Natalie Copala, all-county player. So, Mr. Flanagan, did I got it right? Okay, so, girls, they want to take a picture, I believe?
Yes.
Okay. Again, thank you, everybody. Congratulations, girls. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Board of Education.
Thank you, Coach. At this time, would Dr. Morrow and the board please come up for a picture with the Final Four girls tennis team?
Thank you to the girls tennis team, a great effort this year. As an athletic director, it's always proud to have Coach of the Year and the great success of the team, but to have two is an honor in itself. So it's my pleasure to announce our League Eight cross-country Coach of the Year, Carl Himlen.
Don't take offense, Mr. Carver.
No short jokes.
I'd like to thank the board and Dr. Morrow for giving us the opportunity to recognize our student athletes tonight. I'd also like to piggyback on what Mr. Flanagan said before. Nothing happens in a vacuum. The success of the cross-country team this year wasn't a once-in-a-lifetime thing. It was built through years of support and dedication from the student athletes, from the board, from the administration, and in particular, the last few years that we've had a track program, I think has helped, has benefited our cross-country team immensely because we've had a number of our cross-country athletes that go on to do winter track and spring track, and that just benefits them as they move into the next year of cross-country. So I'm very appreciative of that. We've had a tremendous success this year with cross-country, with an undefeated season. We had four athletes represent Southold at the state meet, and I'll talk a little more about that in just a minute. Back, this is my twelfth year of coaching cross-country for Southold. We've had many wonderful teams. We've had many teams that have gone to the state meet to compete. We've had individuals that have gone to the state meet to compete. But this year was different. We, in years past, we were grateful to be competing at the state meet and grateful to be there. This year was different, though, because we were grateful to be there, but we also wanted to win. We wanted to compete against the best teams across New York State. And that's something that I think is different from years past. And, you know, our student athletes have been, you know, starting to talk about schools like South Lewis and Haldane and Tri Valley, which nobody knows about, but there are all these upstate schools that have these great Class D cross-country programs. And they're now starting to see that they now can not only go up there and run with them, but be competitive with them. And that's a result of the years of dedication and support from the administration, from the school, from the board, and the dedication of all the athletes and the athletes that have come before them. So it's been a wonderful year. To go seven-o was really wonderful. To beat Port Jeff was awesome because we've never beaten Port Jeff. So it was just a really great year, and it was capped off this weekend when we were up at the state meet and had such great results from our athletes. So I'm just incredibly proud of them and grateful that I get to see them all again next year, with the exception of a few graduating seniors that we have that we will miss tremendously. So I'm going to, without any further ado, I'm going to call up our undefeated League Eight cross-country team, starting with Annie Antonucci. Landon Bennett. Come on down, Landon. Landon Bennett. Bobby Doring. And Bobby Doring was one of our League Eight All-League runners. Joseph Early. Jack Kozinski, who was also one of our All-League runners this year. Evelyn Holinsky, one of our graduating seniors. Brian Henry. First-team All-League Flynn Clipstein. One of our graduating seniors who I will miss tremendously, and I love this family tremendously, and he has been a really wonderful captain this year, Tate Clipstein. Ryan Lors. First-team All-League for the girls, Francesca Lynch. Aaron McGilvery. Also one of our All-League runners, Matthew Molnar. Ava Rose. And we also have one other certificate to give. Again, this was a historic year, a lot of memories. So we had two honors for Mr. Clipstein, for Flynn Clipstein this year. He was the first Southold representative who earned all-county honors, and to be all-county, you have to be top forty-five of every cross-country runner in Suffolk County. It's incredibly challenging because the Class A schools are really fast, but Flynn is really fast as well, and he earned all-county honors, so congratulations. And also Flynn is the, this weekend at the state meet, he placed twelfth in the Class D race, which earned him all-county honors. He is the second Southold cross-country athlete to earn all-county honors. The first one was, pardon me? I'm sorry, All-State, sorry. All-state honors. The first one was Olivia Lynch back in 2018, and he's also the highest-placed Southold athlete at the state meet, placing in twelfth place, so we're very excited. So congratulations, Flynn. And just the last thing I'm just going to say is that, and I've said this to a few of you during the week, I said this has been a historic year, the best is yet to come, and I'm looking forward to next year. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Coach. Thank you, everybody. I'd like to invite Dr. Morrow and the board to come up for a picture.
Thank you to the cross-country team, undefeated. Very nice.
Okay, next up, we'll be discussing the boys soccer team. I will be standing in for Coach Sodowsky, although he's not here tonight due to having to attend the senior All-Star game being played by our very own Connor Walenski. Let's give Connor a hand and wish him luck tonight. Every year, we get a player or two to select to the team, and it's an honor. Just a quick quote from Coach Sodowsky, said, "Please thank the Board of Education for inviting me, the boys soccer team, and recognizing all the athletes and coaches this past season. Southold has much to be grateful for." Thank you, Coach. All right, so without further ado, it is my pleasure to announce this year's boys soccer county award winners. These are the county award winners selected by the coaches throughout Suffolk County, all-conference, all-division, all-league, all-county, all-state, depending on which sport. So without further ado, let me announce our first all-league selection, Matthew Schill. So we're going to take a picture of everybody together at the end. Next up, our all-conference selection, James Sepanowski and Connor Walenski. Our all-county academic award goes to Jonathan Lopez. I'd like to congratulate all the selections and also the entire team. They made the county finals for the third time, came up a little bit short, but I know next year and in the off-season, they're going to be putting in the work to get to return. So clap it up for the boys, 2021 boys soccer team. Next, it is my honor to announce the MSG girls soccer coach, Chris Golden. Okay, I guess Chris wasn't able to make it tonight, but I would like to, I would like to take a second and recognize the team in itself. It's a challenge, sorry, it's a challenge that they have to compete in three different teams across the North Fork. It's been a challenge, I know, for a lot of the players there of staying committed, but they got over the hump of the last few years, a couple of championships, and now we have a senior that's been here for the last few years and has been a major contribution to the team, Christine Neuer. Christine finished with all-county honors this year, actually all-conference honors. Next, we're going to be moving on to the porters football team. Coach McCordle, are we here tonight? Coach McCordle, okay. So, excuse me. So this program through the years has had a lot of ups and downs, but there's always been a couple of consistence. The Tramontanas and the Giovinello's. Since I've been here, I've always had a member of their family on the team, and it's really nice, and I'm proud to see that tradition's continuing. You've had siblings on the team prior to and years before, and I'd just like to say thank you to you and your families for staying loyal to the program while they were going through a lot of struggles, and you see it on the upswing of the program now, and it's really nice to see, and it's nice to see that our teammates and Southold players have stuck with it. So this is awarded, Dominic Giovinella has been awarded All-Division for the porters football team from Suffolk County. Along with Dominic, All-Division honors go to Jay Tramontana. Clap it up for the porters football team. All right, moving along to the girls field hockey team. Coach Reed was not able to make it today, but I'd just like to take a couple of seconds and acknowledge the girls and the team. This year is the first year that they actually made the playoffs, and they actually advanced to the county finals, so let's give them a nice round of applause for that. We are still waiting the county awards, individual awards from Section 11, but I would like to take this opportunity to recognize three seniors that have been part of the program since seventh grade, essentially. I can't say enough how proud I am of these girls. I remember them in seventh grade with many of the teammates. There were ten, fifteen players on the team, and now we're looking six years later, and there are three. And I would like to take a second and say that I'd like to say that I'm happy for you that you got to experience the playoffs and the championship game, and it's also my pleasure to announce the Southold Leadership Award to Hannah Taggart, Melissa Gorchek, and Gabriela Safino. Like Connor Walenski, Gabriela was selected to the 2021 Senior All-Star Team, so clap up for Gabriela. And rolling around to our girls volleyball program, Coach Vialletti, were you able to make it tonight, Coach Vialletti? Okay. I would like to, same thing, it's a challenge, you know, being on a combined team, going from school to school, through the years, you have a lot of ups and downs as far as participation, and when you're, you know, one of the few on the team, it does get challenging. And we had a sole senior on the team, and I'd like to give her the Southold Leadership Award as well, Amelia Woods. Thank you, everybody. Thank you to the Board of Education. Thank you to Dr. Morrow, and thank you to everybody in the community. It's a wonderful place. We have great kids, and I'm very proud to be the athletic director of Southold, so thank you.
Could we just ask all of the individual award-winning student athletes to please come down and take a picture? So everybody that won an individual award from?
All-league, all-county, all-conference, all-division, all-state, please come on up. All-league, all-county, all-conference, all-division, all-state, please come on up. And I apologize, our Southhold Leadership Award as well, please. All award winners, please come on up. Families, feel free to come up and take a shot. Let's, Mr. Keel will get it in first, and then everybody else, feel free to come on up. I think we might have to do another kneel and slide on down. Let's do the shimmy. Shimmy on down a little bit. Shimmy, shimmy. There we go. Little bit more. Shimmy, shimmy. All right. And thank you again to all of our coaches and athletes for making it here tonight. Thank you and our families.
Thank you very much, Mr. Flanagan. And although I know that all of our student athletes would love to stay, we're gonna take a one-minute break in case you guys wanna scoot out of here. I know you have homework and, and many other things to do. So thank you again and congratulations.
This is more like, this is why we meet in the library.
The special award goes to everybody who stays.
They don't have to go to school the next two days.
This is it, the bitter end. Everybody who does stay will be sent for a psychological-
We should start putting them at the end of the meeting.
What's that?
Maybe we should start putting them at the end of the meeting.
I know, right? Really, there's only about five more minutes of-
I know, we're really gonna be done in five minutes. We could've been done by the time it took, takes us to get out of here.
We make our commentaries really long.
No. Dr. Morrow, you can continue with your report if you like.
My report's done. Thank you.
That was so easy, wasn't it?
It's a pleasure recognizing our kids. You know, they, they work hard, and our coaches work hard, and I see them here over the summer a lot of times together with the coaches and the kids, sometimes with the coaches up here planning, and sometimes with the kids up here working out. And so it's very nice to see them have such a successful season. You know, we're always successful in the classroom, so it's really nice to see them successful in some of their extracurricular activities and, and all the awards they won. We didn't even get to hear them all, because there's a couple of sports that haven't even given theirs out yet, so they'll be even more coming. And it's nice to see them work hard and meet with success, because in life, you know, when you work hard, you're typically successful. So it's, it's a great lesson for them, and it's a great thing for us to honor. So I'm glad that we get to do it.
Thank you. And you know how we love to see our students' achievements. That brings us to personnel. This is the first time in probably fifteen years that there's only one thing on the personnel agenda, and he happens to be here in the audience. Middle school lead teacher, Mike Carver. That's it for the superintendent's recommendations on personnel, right, Patty, unless I'm missing? That's it? A moved. Judy, a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Carver.
We couldn't have played that out a bit just for fun?
I think these student achievements really should go at the end of the meeting going forward. That brings us to, we need a, a motion to approve the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two district comprehensive improvement plan, which Dr. Morrow has gone over with us. Judy, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The elementary school improvement plan, I need a motion to approve the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two elementary school improvement plan. Motion?
So move.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Finance, you got anything this month? Building, John, you have anything?
No, nothing to report.
They're gonna do something, I saw in the update though, right?
Yeah, they're, they were, we met with the architect last week, myself, Anthony, and Chuck. They're just about done the building survey, you know, the condition report, they're gonna come in, you know, then we'll set up a, a building committee meeting, a building committee, and they'll present everything at that, and then we'll decide how we wanna go forward with presentation from there.
Policy committee, Scott?
Nothing.
Anybody have any new business?
I do.
Go.
I would like, if, if we could have Chris Venator and Chuck determine what exactly the sanction would be for not following the governor's mask mandate. I know there's a thousand-dollar fine threatened, and, you know, what's our total aid? Because that's, I assume what they would do, say, we'll cut your aid, but this is getting ridiculous. The governor just said this week that the masks will be lifted when five-year-olds are vaccinated. The goalposts keep moving. We were at the tennis dinner last Tuesday, and there were sixty tables of ten, and there was, they were probably full, so let's just assume five hundred people there. Everybody that thought that they wanted to wear a mask wore a mask. There was no mandate, there was no requirement. Most of the people were not masked. I'm sure, I'm sure some people that, that weren't there would otherwise have been there, but they made a decision for themselves to not attend because they're medically compromised or whatever, I don't, doesn't matter. But those in attendance that wanted to wear masks wore masks, and I think everybody had a great time. I haven't heard of anybody being sick, you know. Six months ago, they would've called that a super-spreader event, regardless of anybody got sick. But I think that we are damaging our children. This was heartbreaking tonight to see all these people here with masks on, knowing that they're not gonna get sick. If they get sick, they're not gonna die. Suffolk County, the death rate for zero-to-nine-year-olds is point zero zero three. Excuse me, point zero zero six. For nine-to-nineteen-year-olds, it's point zero zero three. I understand that those numbers represent deceased children, and I wouldn't wish that on anybody, and I could not comprehend that happened to my, one of my children. However, we are producing bubble-wrapped, helmeted, antibacterial soap children that they're so, and adults, we're not, the children aren't this way. If we weren't forcing it upon them, they are risk averse, or they're becoming risk averse, but I'm more concerned about language development in the lower grades, the ability of, of people to communicate, because honestly, I will tune out. If somebody's talked through a mask, I can't understand, you know, what, what? And, you know, eventually, I'm, whatever, I just pretend I know what they said. And I'm sure through just human nature, that's happening in our school, and our teachers, because they, they, they have to speak through a mask, they have to listen to kids speak through a mask, that the, the communication is not as good as it could be, and therefore the, the, the educational experience cannot be as good as, as it should be. So if we could just find out exactly what the sanction would be, I mean, I, I said it before she came out with her mandate, my, my mantra was, you do you, twenty-one, twenty-two. I would like to make it just you do you, twenty-twenty-two. You know, you stay home if you're sick. I trust everybody in this room, I trust everybody in this community to do the right thing, because we all wanna stay healthy, we all want our kids to be healthy. And, you know, I just, I think we're damaging these children, and we're, it's just, it's unnecessary. So if we could see what, what, what exactly the sanctions are, and then make a, an informed decision about what we might wanna do as a board, I mean, you can obviously tell what I wanna do. And there are boards out in California that are pushing back on this, but I don't wanna go do it without the information of what the bad consequences could be. I, I gave you some statistics that I pulled off the, the website on Monday, and, like, what's herd immunity? In Suffolk County, if you combine people who have antibodies with at least one dose, it's ninety-point-six percent of the population. If you do just one, two doses, it falls down to like eighty-six point something. But when are we, this COVID's gonna be here forever, and we don't make the kids wear, you know, oh, we didn't have bugs last year. All right, maybe it was because of the masks, maybe it's because everybody was home, but the young children need those bugs to build immunity. And, you know, obviously, this is a, a bigger issue than I can figure out here, but I think for, we're elected to serve our community, and I trust our community to do the right thing, and I wanna do the right thing by them. And if that's, you know, telling the, the state to go pound salt, I'll be happy to be the first one to tell them that, but I don't wanna do, you know, we could pay a couple thousand dollars fine per month, but I'd rather not. So if, if we could just look into that, I know what Chris is gonna say, don't do it, because that's what he should say, but I, I would just like to know what exactly the sanctions would be.
I can try, yes. Certainly, I can try.
How you so good now? December fifteenth? That'd be great. Thank you, Scott. Does anybody else have any new business? Okay, that brings us to our second hearing, hearing of visitors. Would anybody care to address the board about any school agenda items or anything in general that has to do with the school? Moving along. Board member commentary. Mr. Cooley, you still down there?
Yes.
Oh, gosh, we're so far away.
All the way over here.
Don't you like the library better?
Yeah, no, yeah, it's much more, we're much closer. But, yeah, I think I just wanted to acknowledge just the, how we recognize the sports. I think that was a really good thing to do for this school. I think, I mean, as we mentioned during this meeting, the amount of historic seasons that we saw during this fall sports season was incredible. All these teams, you saw all-county honors, all-league honors throughout all the sports. So I think to have this recognition here was very special for, obviously, the students and just everyone to see what these students, their hard work, how it paid off throughout the year, and yet, just cross-country, having a historic season, the undefeated season, girls tennis, just all those historic seasons, all those individual honors, it was really nice to see them recognized here. And then, as for student council, just some things we're working on, we're planning on starting to decorate the school for like some holidays, obviously Thanksgiving, we're gonna get on that, I think, we're gonna try to get on that over the weekend, and just, obviously, with Christmas coming up, but try to get some excitement into the hallways, obviously, the students, that's something we always try to get, just excitement throughout the students, and we think that decorating the hallways for these holidays kinda just livens up the school atmosphere and just, so, and then we have, we're planning on trying to get some sports tournaments just after school, either volleyball, then something indoors, obviously, now in winter, but just, yeah, try to get more events going and try to get the students involved with a bunch of student council activities.
Thank you. Scott?
I, I'd just like to thank the administrators, because the, the sports awards were, or the recognition was, was great, and we do a great, you guys do a great job here of bringing that to our attention, but it's not just sports, it's sports, it's robotics, it's theater, it's ESL, it's, it's, we, we do a great job here, or the administrators do a great job here of pulling everybody out and saying you did a good job, and that's very important. And, you know, we're not just a, a one-trick pony here. We have great athletes, we have great actors and singers and music and, and robotics and just everything, so it's, thank you to you guys for doing such a great job with that.
Thank you. John?
Well, I'll echo that as well, and of course, you gotta thank the families who support the students, and, and you gotta thank the people who pay the bills, our taxpayers, who have not turned, you know, have not rejected us in forty, fifty years, right? We've got like a college-level campus parts of it, you know, it's just, I, I still walk around, and I'm in awe, I look at that track, I look at that field, I look at the library, I look at this auditorium. You know, someone's paying those bills, and, and they've been willing to do it every year, so, and then you guys make it work. So it's a, it's a special place, it really is, and I'm, I'm very proud to be part of this community, and I'm proud to be part of this Board of Education.
Judy? It's, it's amazing what the student athletes have done this year, but then again, it's not amazing, because I just always have said that Southhold kids never cease to amaze when you give them an opportunity, maybe it's because there's nothing else to do around here, but when you give them an opportunity in the school district, they seem to just go all out and really try and excel. Mr. Himmelman and Mr. Carver, congratulations on your personal accolades in terms of your coaching. It speaks to your commitment, and, you know, that's what makes the difference. You give them the environment, give them the tools, and give them the, the adult to help them out, and our kids will, will almost never disappoint, which is really cool. That being said, I also want to address Mr. Latham's comments about the masks. I don't disagree with him at all. I would love to hear that information. I will also let you know, and, and you know this about me, that I'm very concerned that the next move is going to be a vaccine mandate for, for children with, for a COVID vaccine mandate for kids to attend school, and I will come back here to our, my fellow board and ask you to support a letter saying that it is not the time for that yet. There's just, in terms of science, and we can bring all that science, but I think that's what they're waiting for, is to be able to do that, and then you can, you can take your mask off. To me, it's a form of bullying and coercion, but we can have that conversation if you'd like to. But I agree with you about finding out at least what would happen if we did not follow the mask mandate to the T every moment of every day. I am also concerned about speech and language development. Having worked with young children for twenty years, and I'm not quite sure how, how that's, how that's going, but I've heard from parents of young children who are in childcare, and now they are masking children aged two and up in childcares, which they did not do for the first fifteen months of the pandemic, and all of a sudden, I've got providers that I know who are having some real concerns about speech development in their two- and three-year-old groups. I'm very excited, this is what I, I'm very excited to see. We've got our first sentinel. I'm very excited. This makes us, me feel like we're, we're kinda bad, so I'm very excited to read that. I hope everybody has a wonderful Thanksgiving, and I will see you in December at Christmas time, in Christmas, holiday, Hanukkah, all that time. Thank you.
Thank you. So most of what I have on the list here, of course, everybody said, but, all right, Mr. Carver, you really got me with the eighty-six mets. Because I happen to be old enough to have been at that final game, so I knew exactly what you were talking about, and when you said it, I could understand exactly the dynamics of your team. And I don't know, I mean, I know some of the girls on your team, so you hit home with that one. I, I recognize the specialness of that team based on that comment about the eighty-six mets. Under our masks, and I think I speak for all of us when I say we were smiling from ear to ear when we see these accolades for our student athletes, whether they're our athletes one month, or the robotics kids, or the drama kids, or the English kids, we love seeing our students, because as everybody said tonight, we have great kids here. But we have great kids because we have great families, we have great community, we've got great staff, we've, we've got great administrators. I personally, I can only speak for myself, am embarrassed when new administrators and new coaches thank the board, because I don't feel I deserve those thanks. Our community deserves those thanks, because without our community, as John said, passing our budgets, that's what allows these kids to have that. Not me as a board member, certainly not me as a board member. So while I appreciate the gratitude, I would give it back to the community, and I'm, I'm speaking for myself, not for my fellow board members. I just sometimes am embarrassed by it, because I, I don't feel that I deserve it. Back before the, just, I'm just gonna go on the masks for one second, because we all feel differently about them. Before the mask mandate came down, maybe we could ask, when we ask our attorneys the question, Dr. Kreen and I spoke about a compromise, are there places where the mask maybe should be on and then they shouldn't be on? And so I would ask that question of, of Chris Venator as well. Are there times, can we, you know, figure it out better for our students? As long as we're gonna answer the question, I can go back to many years ago that Judy and I certainly were not afraid to take slaps on the wrist if we colored outside of the lines, but we knew that it was in the best interest of our students and our community. We didn't get slapped on the wrist, but we were willing to do it if it was necessary to do. So I think, you know, like we teach our children with the right information, we can make our decisions. make our decisions. So, I thank you for bringing that forward, Scott. Like I said, most of you covered everything. Kudos to Coach Carver and Coach Himmelman on your individual awards as coaches. I personally can speak as a parent of two athletes from this school that you guys put a lot of guys and ladies and everybody involved, put a lot, a lot of times in preseason, offseason, postseason, during season, that I think many people are unaware of. And again, it's the parents that drive their kids to those practices at whatever time they are and pick them up from those practices, so I think that they need to be recognized as well. I'm proud, as John said, to be a school board member. I've been here for just a few years, seems like yesterday, and, and as being an alumni, it always hits home, meetings like tonight where we recognize what we're all here for, and that's our kids. So, I thank everybody. Please don't, don't thank me, but I, I thank all of you. It's great having students and people at our meetings, as much as I like the intimacy of the library, I sure like having people at a meeting. I wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. I think Hanukkah's before we meet again, so I wish everybody happy Hanukkah, and we will see you on December 15th. A motion to adjourn, please.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed to adjournings? Okay, then. Thank you all for coming.